There's no school on that date. And then there are additional dates to remember on the agenda. Item six is community input for items not on the agenda. We have no items there. Nobody has requested to speak. Item seven is conflict disclosure and consideration of waivers. We have no items there. So we will move to our consent agenda. The superintendent recommends approval of the following. A is approval and/or correction of minutes of previous meetings. B is approval and/or corrections of the financial report. C is consideration and approval of the bills. D is new hires to the district. Classified personnel and substitute teachers must be approved in order to be covered by a workman's compensation plan. We have Jonathan Hart, substitute teacher and substitute par educator. Jacqueline Sanchez, substitute teacher, substitute par educator. Danielle Metter, a sped par educator at Madison. T Serre, a sped par educator at McKinley. Amanda Hader, substitute food service. Will Radke, head middle school wrestling. Sally Boomsma, food service lunch monitor at the middle school. Item E is resignations for board approval. We have Jacqueline Sanchez, administrative assistant at McKinley with one year service. Item F is contracts for board approval. We have no items there. So G is HEA request to be recognized for certified negotiations. Item H is an intent to apply for grant funding. We have the school nutrition. Amanda Radke Riley is applying for $25,000 South Dakota Department of Education grant to purchase food service equipment. Item I is requests for approval of open enrollment. Administration has received open enrollment request OE-2023-11 for board approval. J is permission to advertise for bids for three school buses to be paid for with the S R three funding. Item K is request to establish custodial account for the South Dakota Association of Career and Technical Education Administration Division. And our last one is James Dukrath requests permission to have the marching band indoor exhibition as a fundraiser. No passes will be accepted for this event. And that is the consent agenda, consent agenda, which may be approved with one motion. However, if a board member wishes to separate an item for discussion, he or she may do so. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Steinhoff as he celebrates the successes in our district.
Thank you, Chairman Bischoff. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to the Huron Girls Tennis Team for placing or finishing fourth overall in the state tournament. Place winners in singles include, in Flight Two, Senior Elizabeth Heinen, she earned fourth place. In Flight Three, Junior Anne Hoak earned fourth place. In Flight Four, freshman Seagley earned second place. In Flight Five, Junior Paul Clermoo was the state champion. And in Flight Six, Junior Madeline Kleinsauser took fourth place. The place winners in doubles include, in Flight One, Junior Anne Clotter Rubish and Senior Elizabeth Heinen took third place. In Flight Two, Junior Anne Hoak and Junior Madeline Kleinsauser earned fifth place. In Flight Three, freshman Seagley and Junior Paul Clermoo were state champions. Each girls tennis athlete placing at the state tournament earns all state honors. And freshman Seagley and Junior Paul Clermoo were named to the all tournament team. So great finish to the season for our girls tennis in the state competition. Thank yous this evening go to Amanda Riley, Director of School Nutrition and Concessions, and all the Huron School District Nutrition Staff in observance of School Lunch Week, which is October ninth through the thirteenth. Thank you to Board of Edu, the Board of Education in observance of Bosses Day. I appreciate each and every one of you and am glad to be working for you. Thank you to Kathy Bostrom, the Director of Transportation, and all the transportation staff in observance of School Bus Safety Week, which will be October sixteenth through the twentieth. And last but not least, thank you to Anytime Fitness for the donation of treats for the school staff at the Buchanan K One Center. And that concludes our celebrations this evening in the district.
Board, our first report is our high school report, and I would turn it over to Ms. Goglin to introduce our speakers tonight.
At the Huron High School. She is the Secretary of the Speech and Debate Team.
Hi, my name is Green Talba, and I am the Secretary of the Huron High School Speech and Debate Team. Our president is Cameron Cutshaw, and our vice president is Tessa Goglin. The Speech and Debate Team is a competitive school activity where students grow their skills in public speaking and performance. We travel and compete at schools all over South Dakota. Our speech events include oral and turp, oratory speech, informative speech, and exemplar in a speech. Informative and oratory are both speech events that are unique compared to other speech events. Both are student-written speeches. Informative is a speech that uses visual aids to inform the audience about issues, while oratory is a persuasive speech that brings awareness to a problem and advocates to stop said problem or situation. Oral interpretation takes a piece of literature and cuts it down to 10 minutes. Students then interpret the piece in their own way while supporting the author's original attention. Many inter pieces are pre-cut for use by any experience level, but students can bring in their more emotion by taking any literature they already know and turning it, turning that into their piece. This event can be divided into two sub-events, all-year events and inter season. All-year events include humorous, serious, duo, and program oral and turp. These events run from the beginning in October to the end of the season in February. Inter season events include poetry, readers theater, nonoriginal oratory, and storytelling. These events run from the start of the season until state oral and turp in December, after which are done for the rest of the year. The last speech event is exempt. Students draw for a subject out of a list of topics related to news, politics, or the likes, and they are given 30 minutes to research and write a speech. There are three different types of exempt speaking, foreign, US, and novice. Our next main area of events is debate. There are three debate styles: public forum, Lincoln-Douglas, and Student Congress. Public forum involves two-person debate where they debate a new resolution or issue every month. This month's resolution is the United States federal government should forgive all federal student loan debts. People in this event can't just choose one side and stick with it for the entire season. They have to be prepared to debate both sides of the issue. Lincoln-Douglas is a more value-based debate. Lincoln-Douglas is one, is a one-person debate where students also have to be prepared to debate both sides. Their current resolution is the United States ought to prohibit the extraction of fossil fuels from federal public lands and waters. The last event is Student Congress. Student Congress debates congress bills, and they use parliamentary procedures to run each session. Speeches are three minutes long in favor or against the roster of bills agreed upon by the participating schools. Then they vote on the bill. The students would usually research and prepare for their speeches, but this year their speeches are more spontaneous and impromptu. The members of the Speech and Debate Team are hardworking people who are passionate about their events. They spend countless hours to prepare their speeches in hopes of getting good placements at tournaments. Our first tournament is this Saturday on October fourteenth. It is the Brandon Valley Interlet Invitational at Brandon Valley. I wish them luck at the first tournament of the season. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
What's your favorite?
I do, I'm doing serious and duo this year.
Okay. Well, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. All right, moving into our next report, it is our facilities planning report. And Dr. Steinhoff?
Yes, may, the report tonight will, will be a little bit about what we've done thus far, and then our next three steps that we're planning. So the Huron School District completed the district-wide facilities and the five-year enrollment trend studies. J L G Architects reported their findings at the August twenty-eighth Board of Education meeting, and R S P reported their findings at the September eleventh meeting. The Huron School District has utilized the information to draft short-term, which are zero-to-five-year facility plan goals, midterm, which are five-to-ten-year facility plan goals, and long-term, ten-plus years, and we've actually gone out all the way to approximately 2040. J L G Architects will present high-level quotes for the potential short-term projects at our next meeting on October twenty-third. The potential short-term projects include renovations at the McKinley Learning Center, renovations at Huron High School, addition and renovation at Huron Career and Technical Center, roof replacement at Huron Middle School, a partial roof replacement at the high school, and scoreboards at Huron Arena and Tiger Stadium. The next steps that we have planned will be the presentation, as I said already, by J L G Architects, and we will have both Katie and Catherine here at the October twenty-third meeting, and they will give us quotes on those potential Phase One projects. There'll be high-level quotes. The next thing would be to discuss phasing the projects and the potential need for a Kids 2.0 Committee, which I believe would happen at the November thirteenth meeting. And then following that, if you as a board so desire and choose to, then we'll begin forming a Kids 2.0 Committee on November fourteenth, following the meeting on the thirteenth. That's a little bit about where we've been in the last couple of months as a, as a board and an administrative team, and where we think we're going here in terms of facilities So any, any questions or any, any comments to add to that?
Any comments? I guess it'll just be interesting to see J L G's price breakdown on all the different phases and kind of, that's when we can start really digging into what our academic needs as far as facilities go and what we need to do going forward. So, thanks for, for keeping on top of it. All right, moving into our next report to the board, next report will be our Business Manager's Report. Mr. Kristofferson?
First item tonight I have is a report on the general fund. We're already 25% of the way through this fiscal year. To date, we have collected $4,900,000, or 18% of our budgeted revenue. This compares with $4,357,000, or 18% for the same time last year. We've expended $3,918,000, or 16% of our budgeted expenditures. Last year at this time, we had expended $4,424,000, which was 16%. I have a construction update. The, first, the tennis court expansion. This project, you know, as we know, is behind schedule, but we are nearing substantial completion. The, it's coming together nicely. I think we have a really quality facility out there. The one thing, there's a couple of things not done yet. There is some concrete pour, to be poured in between the courts that is supposed to be happening tomorrow. And the roofs for the shelters arrived, but they were the wrong color, so they had to go back to the factory in Michigan, and so that, that'll probably be the last thing The track project is also moving forward. We have the rubber surface completed, which was completed on Monday evening about midnight. So all the rubber is in place. Now we have to wait for the rubber to cure. There's at least a five-day waiting period before any of the lines can be painted. So I think most of those projects will be both substantially complete here in October, and we can do our walkthroughs with the engineers and see, see if there's anything that needs to be corrected.
I've had a lot of questions on the track, and if we'll be playing football this week. Any word from, okay. I've, I've said, well, I think you'd be able to with the rubber being laid, you could put plywood over.
Right. We'll put down a runway to get the teams onto the field, so we make sure we don't damage anything with those football shoes. But yeah. My last thing was count day. As you know, for state aid purposes, we have count day on the last Friday in September. That was September twenty-ninth this year. We think our count's going to be right around 2,951. We budgeted in this budget for a growth of 50 students, which would have been 2,972. So count is 21 less than what we budgeted for, which represents about $150,000 in the budget. And we are working on managing this general fund budget and the shortfall with it. So that is my report.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions, comments? All right, we will move on. Our next report to the board is our Superintendent's Report. Dr. Steinhoff?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. I just have two reports tonight. One, the Associated School Boards of South Dakota held a Wednesday with Wormadall. It used to be called Wednesday with Wade, but they have a new director, and his last name is Wormadall, so they kept the W in, but that was held on the October the fourth in Aberdeen. And they talked about funding, elections, and other potential education bills were covered that evening. Garrett, Tim, and I attended. The second thing I have is that several years ago, if you can remember, we were in this room discussing the results-driven accountability, or R D A, and the Huron School Districts need to improve in several areas of special education. Fast forward to today, the work of Special Education Director Alina Schilling, the special and regular education staff, and the collaboration of the South Dakota Department of Education, the S D D O E, has resulted in positive growth. The work in progress have caused the South Dakota Department of Ed to ask permission to bring other schools struggling with R D A to Huron as a model of positive improvement with R D A. So I'm extremely proud of the staff for their work and their willingness to embrace continuous improvement for the benefit of the students, and now their great work is going to be showed for other schools that are going through what we started with several years ago, and hopefully can help them in their process. And those two are the only pieces of information I have, but I, as always, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody got any questions?
Just a comment. I would have to reiterate that as well. It was a tremendous undertaking that we had to do in order to get things in, back up to where we needed to be, and I'm just very impressed with the efforts on everyone's, on everyone's part there, and very appreciative of the work that's been completed. So, thank you for that. You know, Huron's been a model for other things in the past. This is not something that's new to us, and, and I guess it just continues to show that we, we try to hire the, the most excellent people and definitely do everything we can for this district and the students in this district, and just, again, want to thank everybody involved. So, well done.
Yes, thank you. All right, moving into old business, we have one item of old business, and it is Policy C D B, which is our organizational chart, and this is up for a second reading and approval tonight. There's been no changes since our last meeting or the meeting prior to that. So I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve Policy C D B, which is our organizational chart. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That is approved. Moving into new business, item A of new business is our, is a tennis court project change order number two in the amount of $6,858. Mr. Kristofferson, you have some comments on this change order?
Change order number two is made up of two separate things. The, we realized when we were nearing the end of this project that we are going to need more spectator bleachers. So we went ahead and ordered the bleachers and got them on site, and then rounds construction did the assembly of them. That costs $4,448. And then we had an unforeseen condition where the, I guess you would say, we didn't have it in the plans on what to do with the existing benches that were on the old courts. After you added on, they were on the edge of the old courts, but after you add on two additional courts on each side, now we suddenly had some benches sitting out in the middle of the tennis courts, and they can't be there. So when the tennis court surfacing company was on site, they removed all the in-ground stuff that was in the tennis courts and patched that back up, and now you can't tell that they were ever there. So that came in an additional cost of $2,410. So the grand total of this change order is $6,858. That should be the final change order. I don't foresee any more changes being needed.
Sounds good. Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve change order number two for the tennis court project in the amount of $6,858. Is there any further discussion? Seems like with construction projects, there's always change orders. That's something you always expect, so. So if there's no other discussion, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That is approved. Item B of new business is to designate the business manager as authorizer, as authorized to sign all documents on behalf of the Huron School District for the purchase and closing of the sold-out center. So, anybody have any comments on that? I guess it's pretty easy that we're buying the sold-out center, and we need to authorize him to, to be the signer for that, so.
It's a condition they like to put in the title insurance. They put it in there for the church also, so that they know the person signing the documents has been authorized.
Sounds good. So I would entertain a motion to designate our business manager as the authorized signer.
So moved.
Second?
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Kelly. All right, moving into item C of new business, it is an intent to apply for grant funding. We have the Huron School District C T E, Mrs. Joanne Conichney, coming to talk to us about a $1 million US Department of Education grant, up to, up to $1 million.
Good evening. So back in August, I had the opportunity to attend an educational summit called Unlocking Career Pathways, where Secretary Cardona was the guest speaker, met with various states throughout the United States, and so that's where this grant was unveiled, and I'll talk a little bit about both this evening. So the four keys to unlocking career success, where the foundation of this grant lies, is our dual enrollment, so earning college credit during high school, work-based learning, students gaining that career experience in the real, real world and industry, workforce credentials, so giving those students a competitive edge, and career advising and navigation, helping students make informed decisions about life after high school. Hopefully you can hear this.
Let's disrupt the design, a design that has not changed in over 150 years. That's two pandemics ago. Let's design them for the needs of our country today. That's how we raise the bar, and that's how we lead the world. Together, let's make this summit a launching pad. New efforts in all of your states to engage our youth, energize our economy, and then together we will lead the world. Thank you.
Within the dual enrollment, many, many students are still unable to access the benefit dual enrollment has to offer. There's a variety of reasons why. Lack of awareness, the exclusionary entrance requirements, socioeconomic status, maybe the fees are out of reach, or transportation costs to get to wherever, or could be technology costs. Most of the dual credit courses are online now, or a lack of prerequisite coursework. Promising credentials within dual enrollment could be stackable, transferable, and leading to occupations that are in demand, offer family-supporting wages, and provide opportunities for growth within an industry. Work-based learning, we've talked a lot about. They showed and explained four different pillars. The career exploration, which we do K five, K eight, just increasing knowledge of what careers are out there. Career exposure, career engagement, and career experience. So that's the ladder of what we hope to follow. And the next slides just talk about what can we do in each of those categories. So basic industry speakers, career fairs, all the way to internships, apprenticeships, and on-the-job training. Workforce credentials, that's something that we'll be talking about within our C T E advisory committee, but what credentials are of value in the labor market and are truly sought? Not just something that you get just because it says, I have this. We want it to be valuable. We want it to be meaningful, and we want it to essentially help their pay increase as they enter the workforce. Being able to eliminate those barriers, barriers, maybe a cost. Being able to eliminate those barriers, barriers, maybe a cost again is, or transportation, and then hopefully develop and implement agreements with credential providers. So, for example, CPR with the Red Cross, or some sort of agreement with those providers. Not all credentials are created equal, and states don't have consistent definitions. If you go onto our state CTE website, there's pages upon pages of credentials in each of the career clusters, and that's what we're going to look at as a CTE Advisory Board for Huron. Career advising and navigation, so the target one for this is just providing access for students about career awareness. What's out there? What can I do? What's my future going to look like, even though we know their future is going to change at least 15 times before they probably enter college. Target two is providing information to students with respect to career options, financial aid, job training, a whole list of items, and support services for students and families. And then target three, it could be potential special assistance for special populations, for direct support services to help those students be successful. There's a lot of barriers in this one, and that was a heavy topic at the summit. It requires hiring additional school counseling staff, having a person to help do that, help provide student aid counseling for families, and another option for career advising is to provide PD to the staff to strengthen college and career advisement models. So the Career Connected High School Grant is $25 million that the United States Department of Education is putting out there to focus on everything that I just talked about. They want to build capacity among secondary education, post-secondary education for those dual credits, workforce development for that work-based learning, and just expanding access to career-connected high school programs, removing any barriers. And the reason too, and you heard Secretary Cardona say, we want to raise the bar and unlock career success for students. Questions that you have for me?
Yes, sir.
You apply for this grant, do you have any idea on what kind of timeline before you get an answer?
I don't. I know it's Intergovernmental Agency Review in December. What that means, I don't know. I would hope that by January 1st, they would have announcements, but being the federal government, there, there's not a specific timeline out there.
Right, I understand that, thank you.
Yes.
Is there a match tied to this grant?
There is a 50% match. The match that we will be using is our general fund. So salaries for our current CTE staff surpasses that $500,000, it's just $500,000 over the course of five years. So we have, we're already spending that money, it's nothing that is additional to the district or the taxpayers that is required.
Do you, reading it, it doesn't really say, do you specifically know what you would use the money for? Or you can use it for salaries for additional staff, is that the?
Great question. So, the first piece would be salaries, working with Lake Area Tech and Mitchell Tech, each providing two instructors for two different classes and a phase implementation. So the first year would be two dual credit classes, and we'd pay for those salaries with that grant. Year two would be additional, two more classes, so we'd have a total of four dual credit classes on campus, offered by post-secondary instruction teachers, so that's salary and benefits. Some equipment, including power sports, precision ag, and a little bit of machine tool technology, scholarships for every student to participate in dual credit, so alleviating that barrier period, and that, that is the majority of the grant. There may be some other odds and ends in there, but nothing that is substantial.
So on dual credit classes that we would be offering and having an instructor in-house, would we say a class wasn't full? Would we be able to offer that to neighboring schools, like the, the model that we have going?
I believe that's the intention, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm writing in a 20-student class, 20 students per class per year.
Mrs. Knitschney, can you talk about how the relationship of the courses that you're planning to offer with the dual credit and what the survey results were last year, two years ago, from our students from eighth, ninth, 10th, and 11th grade?
Yes, so, it actually kind of correlates with the grant that we just submitted for the state, and goes with that data as well. We've talked about the survey in the fall of '22, where the students were asked if this class would offer, were offered, would you take it? And with a description translated into different languages. And Diesel Tech was a, one of the top six, machine tool technology, precision agriculture, and small engines. In conversations with Mitchell Tech, we've kind of added on to that, and power sports, because they have a powerful, powerful sports program at Mitchell Tech that we'd be able to work with. So every single one of the classes that we're looking at adding directly correlate to our results and what the students, and it correlates to labor market. Those, those things are needed, not only in our community, but in our state.
Great. Are there any other questions, comments?
No, my other question was regarding the scholarships, and you covered that, so thank you very much.
Make a motion to approve the grant application?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve our grant application. Is there any further discussion?
Exciting, good luck. Fingers crossed.
All right. We will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, that is approved. All right, moving into our next item of new business, we have Policy GDBD, Class II, III, and IV absence for personal reasons. And this is up for an introduction, and I would turn it over to Dr. Steinoff for comments.
Thank you, Chairman Bischoff. I'd like to just back up a little bit. For quite some time, the district, and specifically classified employees, and I'm going to specifically say Class II, Class III, and Class IV, have, have not had a policy that covers leave for them that's considered unpaid leave. And so we've really not had a precedence, they've been taking it really without any limit to how many unpaid leave days they could have. These Class II, III, and IV employees are able to have sick days and can work short-term leave, but don't have any other options for taking days off, so if they're attending their child's game or have other reasons, that's really the, the only option they would have, would to utilize the policy that we'd had, we've utilized previously, where they'd come to the board and ask for a leave of absence, which has typically only been done in kind of a once-in-a-lifetime opportunities or very unique situations. And so the district has been operating under that premise for quite some time, and typically it's not a problem. However, we found out this year that another school district in South Dakota, who has their health insurance through the Associated School Board of South Dakota, had an employee that was gone a substantial amount of time, and the employee was gone so much they had burned through all of their legitimate leave, and they didn't have any legitimate leave, and the school district didn't require that person to resign, or didn't relieve them of their duties, and kept them on the insurance list with ASBSD. Somehow, ASBSD found out about that, and that's against the rule for them. The employee can only be insured if they're, if they're either working, or they're covered by some sort of a legitimate leave. Well, what ended up happening was that, that employee had their life, their health insurance basically taken away at the time of when their leave expired, and then there was a lot of medical expenses that came with. This employee was out of, was not working due to having medical issues, and had a lot of medical expenses, and the school district was put on the hook for about a million dollars to pay those medical expenses, because they, they had an employee that should not have been on, on the health insurance plan, and they didn't let ASBSD know that, and they didn't cover that. So that's really brought us up to speed of where we are and realize we don't want to put ourselves in jeopardy as a school district of having people that are not covered by legitimate leave, and potentially have a similar scenario, you know, happen to us. And in talking to fellow superintendents, you know, one of the, one of our, one of my colleagues mentioned, Craig, also think about it at another level, that when those, those costs for insurance are incurred, they have contracted rates at which they're paying those. You are not a medical provider, you don't have the contracted rate, so you will be paying the full cost of whatever that is, and so what you think is a typical bill, when you get the insurance bill, you'd be paying the full freight, not, not with those reductions. So, her comment to me was just be aware that it may even be higher than what you're thinking. So that's got us to the point where we believe that we, we need to have coverage for Class II, Class III, and Class IV employees, and we have the policy before you that Mr. Christopherson put together, and, and ran by, ran by me. We've, we've presented this to our Class II, Class III, and Class IV employees, and basically what this policy states is that the employees would be eligible, and they could take time off an hour at a time, but they would be eligible for a maximum up to five days of unpaid leave per year. So that would grant them some of that time. Since this policy has gone out and they've had a chance to review it, and the administrators have gotten some feedback from their employees regarding this, because again, we went from basically unlimited to now trying to get it to be within five days for the year, there's concerns that that's going to be a struggle, and we may end up losing employees. I did a straw poll with our administrative team, and 16 of our administrators would prefer the five days to be 10. And I'll state that the 10 will still accomplish the goal, the original goal that we were going after, which was to make sure that we have our employees covered under legitimate leave, to, to not put us in a situation. And the administrators would still have the authority to approve it at, at their level, but the recommendation would be, the policy is read as it is here, although this says five, and the desire is that, that five be 10, instead of the five, so it would be up to five unpaid leave days per year. So, questions? Or, Kelly, if you've got anything that you've got to add, or anything that I said incorrectly on that, let me know. I, I forgot too, I did also receive numerous emails from employees that are Class II, Class III, and Class IV, and they simply said, "We'd sure like to request that this be 10, not five," and did so in a professional manner, they sent it to their administrator, and then their administrator forwarded those emails on to me.
Explain the change in policy if we're not in negotiations?
Great question. And I sought legal advice on that, and was told that we should be able to do this. This policy is, doesn't have an end on it, so it's, and it's not been negotiated before. But part of the reason on why we think that we can add this policy in now is that we're going from technically not having any leave available to them, now having legitimate leave that's covered under policy. But, that is a good point, you know, to think about in terms of the time in which we're implementing this right now, and, and how that process will work to get it started, because we were at unlimited, and now trying to reduce it down.
So is this one that would be renegotiated in the spring then?
It's a policy that could be negotiated, and I would, I would say could be if Class II, Class III, or Class IV would, would bring this to the table and want to negotiate.
I would think five is a good place to start, if we're going to redo it again in the spring then, potentially.
Any other questions or comments on this one? This is up for introductions, so we'll have the next two meetings essentially to, to talk about it and discuss it. You stated that, you know, right now, currently, nobody should be taking any unpaid leave, according to the current policies that we have, they would have to go before the board, and so people are taking leave, and so we do need to do something about it and put a policy in place, and, yeah.
I guess the biggest thing is protecting not only the school district, but our employees as well. I mean, if you're going through a lot of health stuff, you probably, the last thing on your mind is where you're at with unpaid leave, and certainly don't want to get that letter when you don't have insurance. It's pretty miserable, so, this protects everybody.
Well, this is our introduction, so it'll be on our next meeting for a first reading. Our next item of new business, item E, is the track project change order number two in the amount of $17,166.77. So I would turn it over to Ms. Christopherson, Christopherson for some comments.
Okay, coincidentally, we have a change order number two on the track project, same night that we have change order number two on the tennis project, but that just goes to show that both of these projects are winding down, and we're getting everything taken care of. So what happened with the track was when the rubber surface was removed, then we had a lot more repairs to do than originally anticipated, so an asphalt company that was a subcontractor came in and repaired all the cracks, and left, and then was asked by the rubber surface track company that if they couldn't do the inside three feet all the way around the track, that butts up against a concrete curb that separates the track and the artificial turf, so we went ahead with that, that was in the last change order, and got all the asphalt repairs done. Then the, the rubber surfacing track company came back and wasn't completely happy with the conditions that were presented. It's nothing that the asphalt subcontractor did, it's just the conditions of a track that was originally installed in 2006. So we spent the summer trying to find a solution on what we could do to make this track acceptable, so that the rubber surfacing company would put down their surface, and what finally came to light was a process called microgrinding of the asphalt, where it, it's kind of like a street milling machine, except it uses a much finer blade, and it goes around the track, and it's GPS-guided and laser-guided, and it makes a perfectly smooth surface at whatever depth you set it for. So they made two laps around the track, and did the inside 16 feet, and blended it in with the rest of the track, so that we had a perfectly smooth and level surface. Then the rubber surfacing company was on board to do the work, and they came right away, and actually the same day, and began work and placed the rubber. So, this is what it took to bridge the gap for the subcontractors. This all occurred in a whirlwind about a week ago. Weather was becoming a crucial concern, so I was glad to see that we could get this moved along.
Make a motion to approve the change order for the track project?
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the change order for the track project. Is there any discussion?
It's nice to see it coming to an end, yeah.
Yeah, I've had a lot of comments from students and coaches concerned about the spring track season, and if it was going to happen, and, so I'm sure everybody will be very happy to, happy to see that, the tennis court as well, for sure.
All right, if there's no further discussion, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries, the track project change order number two is approved. All right, our next item of the night is an executive session under South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, subsection 4, preparing for contract negotiations or negotiating with employees or employee representatives. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session, and I would note that when we come out of executive session, there will be no further business. Did we vote? No, we didn't vote. All those in favor going to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. We'll take a brief recess, and then reconvene in executive. We'll take a brief recess, and then reconvene in executive session.